Call the Board of Commissioners staff meeting to order, um, February 4th, 2016, in the Daxler. First item on the agenda is discussion of the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board Land Acquisition Grant Program. And this was something I, Colleen Roberts, had requested or it was interested, one of the other commissioners wanted to readdress because we had discussed it at a prior meeting. That being, if I recall the conversation, it was a public, a private land sale. We did, we're gonna take a position. And I went to the hearing on the 21st to some of it. And from that, I just wondered if we wanted to discuss taking a position and some of my concerns in follow-up to this. Did you get a copy of that fair handout in your packet? Okay, so my-
None of you have it, but I have a copy.
Okay. So, um, we did copy their, the handout for each of you and get it if you don't have it. This is the 352 acres that, um, the OWEB grant is helping to get the conservation easement to. And first of all, I guess I have three, three points I want to discuss. One, that it's state money to purchase private land or in a conservation easement. And that, um, is concerning to me in, in where that's headed. Secondly, because we've seen when we talked with, um, Greg Walden's office about the wilderness area and how they have patches and they wanna put them together. And where this is going, um, possibly in light of the, um, the road, the wild and scenic they're trying to do, is my second point and the goal's 2020 with, with water and is a, is another concern I have. But reading from their own book, their long-range concerns, which is like inside the thing, I just wanna read it. It says, it kinda just depicts their goal. Says fortunately, this land is not, talking about the 352 acres, is not isolated nor disconnected from us all. And its influence doesn't stop at this property lines. It's a vital part of a much larger ecosystem. Together with local properties that are already conserved by Jackson County, the state, the federal government, and the nature conservancy, as well as other private lands with high conservation values. The Rogue River Preserve can become part of one of the largest land conservation efforts in Oregon. We could one day see a connected set of protected lands covering more than 5,000 acres and near to 15 miles of the Rogue River. That alone concerns me. And I, I will, like I said, I will make my own objection to this. The public comment time is till April, um, mid-April sometime. And I just know if we want, if you wanna discuss it as well, Michelle, on if we wanna make a board stand.
So what are you proposing? Do you have a suggestive language or what do you-
No, I don't, just an objection to the OWEB land acquisition grant program. That's what the public hearing was about and that is the-
Right, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to zero in on, and I think you just hit it, is are you looking at objecting to the OWEB program that's gonna be used, the dollars used on these private acquisitions or this particular acquisition itself?
Um, well, I think this public comment time will be about this OWEB grant particularly.
This specific grant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This, this land acquisition grant.
Okay.
Their grant.
I would, I would ask that we would take a, if we're gonna look at, not necessarily the specific, but the root of the problem, which would be, or the root, as you just described, it would be using OWEB forms, water enhancement. So those were watching Oregon Water Enhancement Board funds to, um, to do-
Water.
Water, OWEB, Water Enhancement Board, yeah. Using those funds to acquire conservation, because there's already national LWCF funds, land and water conservation funds that are available for this type of stuff because this basically starts a secondary program within the state of Oregon for this type of, this type of piece. So that, that's where my mind would go, is do we wanna hit it just on this piece or are we gonna look at the overarching concept of having a secondary program for the, to be able to have public funds available to acquire private land?
So can I just offer a few points I think might be important? OWEB is federal pass-through dollars to the state. So they're not two different programs, they're the same program. Federal agencies use federal OWEB dollars, state agencies, or members, citizens groups of our state access OWEB funds through the state parks program. OWEB funds actually get managed both at the state level through state parks and at the federal level through federal parks. When there's an acquisition, both of those, at the state level, both of those levels of government have to agree. I would just point out that much of the county park inventory was purchased with OWEB funds. Much of it from private parties putting it in government control. Much of the land along the Bear Creek Greenway that the county didn't own or wasn't not otherwise government-owned land, which was acquired, was acquired by the use of OWEB funds through, um, Oregon Parks for the purposes of developing the greenway. Once again, moving it from private to government ownership in that case. So the county has been a huge user of these funds in order to serve our citizens in our parks system specifically. We also have used them to purchase from private sellers, which does essentially set it in conservation because the rules with the funds require very specific uses, whether you're a nonprofit, Southern Oregon Land Conservancy, or your Jackson County Government, or the city of Medford is also a large user. We did also use this funds to acquire the property where we're building our B park from a private entity. It was, um, a concrete company, LTM, that we purchased those properties from. So if you were going to take a position generally just opposed to this program, I do want you to know there'll be a huge impact on the county's ability to develop our parks, our park system, the greenway, other projects that you all have approved that we would move forward with. My suggestion, if you wanna look on a case-by-case basis, that's, that would probably be a better approach. Otherwise, uh, we're really limiting what the county is able to do for some of the projects. You've already approved them, agreed to.
Well, perhaps the, the agenda was titled differently than I requested. I requested discussion of this, um, public comment time about this acquisition because we had decided not to make a, a stand as a board on this acquisition. And, and I asked, can we revisit it and we agreed we would talk about it. So I'm talking about this acquisition and this-
I read the title and I'm trying to-
Yeah, this said grant program and I just wanted to speak to this acquisition, which the, the public hearing was for. And I might say the public hearing was poorly advertised for citizens to find out about it. I heard from several people that-
Who was it?
Had difficult time finding, um, information about this public hearing. But there was attended, well, you know, the room was packed. And I, I, like I say, I will make my own if, if the board doesn't wanna make a position. I'll make my own, um, in personally, um, opposition to it, but if our board, I am opposed to it.
Just right off the bat, Greg, right?
It's adjacent to the property. That's why the county was even approached, the county's actually approached to support the project.
Yes.
And I told our staff that we wouldn't be bad without the board's approval. We actually had the discussion to recommend this remaining neutral. It is a benefit to our park, obviously, for that particular area.
And here's a map. There's Agarum on Highway 234. So I, I think our park is in there somewhere.
Yeah, our park is actually there. Now, what's the landlord, I mean, this is a landlord that wants to do something with their land. Do you have any idea what the landlord wants to do?
I haven't, I don't know what the landlord wants to do.
I did, I did, we explained this to you when we came and brought the issue to you. So the landowner are the heirs of a property owner who bought the property. Essentially, it's a private property of maintaining and conservation. The heirs want to continue to maintain it as their parents, specifically their father had hoped to have it maintained in conservation. So they approached the Southern Oregon Land Conservancy about selling it to them to, in order to maintain it in conservation.
So I understand Commissioner Roberts' concern about the statements that he made when he was, um, in, in continuous land acquisition concepts that were stated.
That we're, we're fighting on the backside of other issues.
Right.
And this would get an opportunity to fight on the front, well, on the front side, but before it's done.
I, I understand what you're saying. I'm torn between private property rights and the rights of a landlord to do what they want with their property.
They could do what they want. I'm objecting to OWEB, the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board money going towards it. That's, that is what the pub, public comment is for, is for that part and that part only. And that, like I say, if, we have till April if we wanna re-bring it back to another board discussion with Michelle Dyer. If he's here, um, for the future meeting.
Well, I just, um, you know, in this literature, it has a piece here. "If we can succeed in placing this land in the hands of those who will preserve its ecology naturally, then we will have to fulfill our family's mission as stewards of this special place." And it's written by Marianne MacArthur, granddaughter of Robert Moore, who was milliner of the property. So, um, as I read the literature, and it's, I agree that the family wants this to become some kind of park where people can access it and people, and the public has the ability to come visit it.
So let me back up.
Yeah.
Putting it in the control of Southern Oregon Land Conservancy doesn't provide necessarily that the public can access it, they would have control over whether or not that occurred. There also has been statements made about moving this into non-profit ownership means we lose the tax base.
Right.
Southern Oregon Land Conservancy, by way of choice, chooses to continue to pay taxes even though they're not required to pay taxes on property. They do that in our county with all property that they have acquired. So it doesn't affect the property tax base that way. It's taxed just as if it were a private, uh, property. They're not required to do that, so they can discontinue that practice at any time. So I just want you to know that that, that is the case. But it would be just like any private property owner would have control over the property. I mean, if they sold it to someone who wasn't the Southern Oregon Land Conservancy, a private property owner doesn't have to let people on the property either, so.
Yeah, and I'm not objecting to the, the rights of the private property owner to sell to whoever they want. I'm objecting to, uh, the, the grant from the state.
You're, you're objecting to the use of state funds to this Southern Oregon Land Conservancy for the purpose of the purchase.
For this, for this purpose.
If they want, yeah, I'm assuming if they wanna raise funds some other way that doesn't include a government subsidy, you're not trying to limit their right to do what they want with their property.
No, this won't limit their right at all.
I'm just trying to clarify.
I'm, I'm just trying to articulate.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify exactly what we were looking for, the question here, the grant program like I talked about. So, yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to not using, uh, public funds for, for these types. I, I see, one of the things that, I don't think you were on the commission at the time. One of the things that we were dealing with this, uh, in the last few years was the Table Rocks expansion. And the BLM was basically in the process of purchasing land from the nature conservancy to be able to place that into federal ownership. And LWCF funds were used for the original purchase of that land during the nature conservancy in this process.
And they made-
The nature conservancy has popped into the private sector and then they turn around and sell it for profit, uh, in profit, back to the federal government, to the government, and then turns it into a place. And what I noticed in that process, and we discussed in the previous one, if I remember correctly, the restrictions that the BLM placed on that land was actually more restrictive than any other public land in our county. And it was based on the fact that that was the sale, the contingent of the sale because that's what the nature conservancy wanted, is they wanted to get more restrictions on the use of that land. And, and it was really disturbing because if it goes into public ownership, it's supposed to be in public access and this is what people do to it. But to have it more restrictive than anything else, you mean, was just to me, just what the heck's going on here?
Well, I think we're making an area of fire metal concern, a whole area.
Because that was some, literature, some restrictions there that weren't, weren't necessarily the case anywhere else. I remember John Grady being here talking about it.
So what, you're, you're, you're close. What, what occurred was the previous board supported the acquisition of the property by a nature conservancy and access to land and water conservation funds to do so. With the understanding that that property would be transferred in ownership to BLM, that it would be managed the same, with the same rules and regulations as the Table Rocks were currently being managed, because this is land that was part of the Table Rocks, essentially that had been held in pretty same private ownership. What occurred was, once they acquired the property, then they're required to do a land use management plan. So they did apply the equal rules that existed previously in the interim of developing, uh, long-term management plan. There were proposals in long-term management plan that would have created more limits. And they came and explained that to the board and the board objected to those additional, you know, restrictions. To be honest with you, I don't even think they're done with the planning for the Table Rocks. So I don't think that there's been an outcome that we can say that's what happened yet. But the board is on the record, is taking a position of not increasing restrictions. They agreed to the project with the understanding that there would be the same equal access for the public that there was with regard to every other part of the Table Rock. And, you know, so that was the dispute after it happened. And like I said, the nature conservancy or BLM, um, they can change their minds. So what I'm telling you today, you know, they, they could, nature, or the, in this case, Southern Oregon Land Conservancy could decide they're gonna completely prohibit public access, even though that's not what they're saying they're going to do, they could. They could decide not to pay taxes and the BLM, you know, they have to do is build their land use planning process, uh, long-term land use planning process. They can create new restrictions or remove some restrictions. Typically, you know, they don't remove restrictions that they could, so.
So about this public comment area.
I agree with you, opposing the use of public funds for the acquisition. If they really want to be as conservative place and take it over by the, or as they say here, they can donate. If they really want that, they can donate it to the, uh, the state. But what I see here is public funds being used to purchase the property. Maybe they try, I don't know if they tried to sell it or something, I couldn't tell you. But, um, if they wanna sell it, they could sell it. If they wanna donate it to the program, I know we've had people donate to the county their properties for a different process. I know we had a ranch here in Austin, Long Island, donating to it. They're required somehow, I'll give you some background on that before we give them the grant.
The, yeah, that was a long time ago. I think, you know, we were, we were looking to have other property donated to us, um, in the process. But actually, it was a partial, partial purchase with a tax write-off for the balance of the appraised value. This was when Galton owned the property. He went through bankruptcy essentially. And in the bankruptcy, the trustees sold the property to Jim Blushy or Mo Blushy.
This is the self-speaking ground here.
Right, so it was gonna give us access to our park. So we, technically, it never got donated to us. You know, we were in the process of negotiating a partial purchase with a donation. And it was a land and water conservation fund conversion. So the difference in value was something we would have to come up with cash if they didn't agree to provide us, uh, you know, to donate it and take the tax deduction. So there's, once again, another land and water conservation fund acquired property that the county.
And I think looking at those individually is really important. And it gives us the opportunity to weigh in at the, the comment time. And that's all I'm asking, do we wanna weigh in?
And I think council could prepare something, or staff could prepare something to weigh in on. Basically, so we have concern about too much land going into federal ownership or, or into government ownership.
Well, do you, do you want to be bad or do you wanna say that you oppose this particular use of funds for this particular acquisition? Because I'm telling you, we're applying for land and water conservation funds to expand the Rogue River Greenway to the Bear Creek Greenway by acquiring private property, which is something the board's directed and approved us to do. So to say you're against it while at the same time we're acquiring it as a government agency doesn't, you know, it's kinda contradictory.
I'd like to say oppose a free use for this project, for this acquisition. That's what, of the comment, the comment time period is very specific to this acquisition. It gives us the opportunity to weigh in on this one.
And it sounds like I'll be drafting a letter.
Would you please?
Um, are the concerns, because as I understand it, the, the, how currently is, is being proposed is that it's not going to go into government ownership, it's gonna go into the sub, the ownership. The Southern Oregon Land Conservancy is gonna get a grant. So is the concern that this board has-
Government funds being used to supply property and maintain it in private ownership.
So government funds being used to purchase property, private, private property. By, by a private pro-
And this particular acquisition.
They're, they're not, is the ownership not transferring over to the government for park or something?
Right.
It's maintaining in a nonprofit, but the funds are being used to acquire it.
The, just so you all know, I mean, if you actually look at the legislation, federal and then the state, what the state does is adopt rules to be able to accept essentially if you do shareage in for past your dollars. This is the purpose of the fund. I mean, it's why the fund exists, is to acquire properties. And there are specific rules about what you can do with those properties once you acquire them. All of our land and water conservation fund-acquired properties, you know, uh, require us to use them for public outdoor use, basically.
Right.
And there's a whole list of details of what that means and doesn't mean. So, and the rules aren't the same, um, for them, but it doesn't mean you can't limit access. What you can't do is you can't give, um, uh, you can limit access, but you can't, uh, when we do the cascade question that we suit over there, we're giving out.
Uh, well, they were giving exclusive access.
Yeah, you can't give exclusive access. So you can't say, now only these people can access the property. But you can limit access to the property, you just can't give exclusive use, so, you know.
Well, I'm adamantly, adamantly against this one. Because I, I think there's, you know, we was just a term unattended consequences, so we'll be fighting down the road. And I see, see those as very possible.
Like I said, if LWCF funds or OWEB funds being used to acquire property is going into government ownership, it's gonna be public use, I still believe that there needs to be some kind of, need some change in legislation, that there has to be a, a land swap concept. So if they're gonna put more into the federal percentage, there needs to be a certain, that equal amount coming back out, so.
That, that's, that is a rule, but not until you convert the property. So if they bought the property with land and water conservation funds and decided they wanted to sell it to private ownership again, what they have to do is go out and find another piece of property that they can take the funds from the acquisition, the private ownership of great, equal or greater value and purchase another property. So it, it works, like you say, but in the reverse.
Right.
It doesn't work, first you have to exchange a private piece of property for a, for a land and water conservation fund- obtained property. It's, once you obtain a property, if you wanna do something else with it, you have to, it's called a conversion, you have to convert it. So it, it, what you're saying does exist, maybe just not in the order that you want it to be in.
But doesn't, well, if they wanna sell that property, they buy, they acquire, they sell that property back into public and then acquire new government property.
Right.
And that's not what I was saying. What I was saying, what I'd like to see is, if they intend to buy government, or buy property out of the private sector, they need to release an equal amount back into the public sector. So if you're gonna convert it to government property, you have to convert X amount back into public.
It's circular, but what I'm saying is it's the chicken or the egg. What you're saying happens.
It needs to be done upfront, it takes a spot, a critical mass.
Do you have any concerns, uh, just, it's been a little longer, so of course we have some general concerns about government funds being used to help private property owner acquire private property. Is there any concern specifically about this particular tract of land? Um, I, I don't, I'm not familiar with the area, so I'm, I'm just trying to figure out all of the board's concern.
I think I've got it, we've worked on it together. It just comes down to the fact that they're opposed philosophically to government funds going to make a private purchase.
Yeah.
And I am concerned about this particular pot of land, as depicted in their brochure, that it's, it's linked to everything that we're looking at and objecting to the wild and scenic with the BLM, the Table Rock Monument proposal, and they're saying it's linking it outside their borders. And I, it just screams mayday to me.
You know, and I wouldn't mind that being in there based on the literature. They, they basically said it's the intent to have a contiguous piece. And this would be the, uh, basically a patchwork way of creating that contiguous corridor along the Rogue River where people no longer have the ability to live on the Rogue River like they've been doing for all these years.
Just so you understand, it's not this that would facilitate that. If it's designated wild and scenic, it, it doesn't matter if it's in private ownership or not. It could stay a private property if it's made wild and scenic, it'll still apply. So there isn't a link between making it a wild and scenic and whether or not-
The, and the Southern-
Land and water, or neither, Southern Oregon Land Conservancy far as it, or it's owned in private ownership. The same rules apply.
Okay, but it's the beginning of a link of being able to put government-owned all of the property up and down where people no longer live on the river. And that's what I see in this particular place, if it becomes a conservancy issue, people no longer get to living on the river as they had in the past. And if they're, if I read this correctly, they, what Commissioner Roberts is depicting is it was, it's their intent to start acquiring land up and down the river that would facilitate this, putting it under conservancy that's contiguous.
And that may be true.
Yeah, that's what I referred to.
But what I'm saying is, it's not limited by whether or not there's a wild or scenic designation.
Yeah, I understand.
If they were all private owned, the same rules would apply.
But the difference is, is under, what I'm seeing down here, people would no longer be allowed to live on the river if their goals are identified here. It would take away a life away from the Rogue Valley.
I'm not disagreeing with that, but I'm just saying, I wanna make sure we're not linking it wrong.
And that's what I'm, is there is-
Right, and with this particular grant, I don't know that we've seen anything that guarantees it's, you know, being held perpetuity for, for the citizens either. Okay. We agree.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, how about you?
We'll get a draft and bring it back to the board, maybe if you all, wait till all three of you are here.
Okay.
Or, or not, I mean, it only takes two of you to draw, we can do it right now.
Why don't we get together, draft and then bring it back, to make sure that we've captured the points? That sounds like the concrete, but it's open to people, so.
Right.
We'll have an opportunity for the board to review the draft and, and if you, if there's more issues that come up, I'd either put it all into one letter, or send a letter or not, address everything.
Give it to Commissioner Dyer.
Gotcha.
Tell him to review it.
That working great, okay. So moving on to the second item on the agenda, is the discussion of increased audio accommodations. Also something, um, I have requested, um, to be put on the agenda. And that is something we've discussed in the past about having these Tuesday, Thursday meetings, the audio file being put on the webpage. And, um, I've gotten two different, uh, re, an updated quote from our administrator about the cost. And do you have that? And I had the, the previous quote.
You guys put it in my packet, so I assume you put it in there.
Okay. So, um, this is something I have wanted for a year. And I want it as a citizen as well, to have access to audio files like people can access the televised files on our webpage. So there's two different items to think about, if that's the philosophy that we want as a board, and the cost. It, um, so if it is, I kinda looked at it with a SWOT analysis in looking at this. The strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to making a new change to what we do. So my strength I see is the transparency that, that I want and I think, I would think our board wants. How we arrive at decisions, the discussions we have. The public can know the meat of the discussions firsthand, they can tune into it, um, without relying on media or without relying on third-party narrative that may or may not be misleading, would be from the county to- that may or may not be misleading, would be from the county to people. And that is also the opportunity, is that we have that leadership role in getting our information out to anybody who wants to access it. The strength I see is that there's other people that, besides myself, that have expressed this interest. League of Women Voters has shown their support. And it is their duty and the support of government transparency in there. And what they do for meetings, it's been requested by citizens as well. Also, I think it's an opportunity, in my opinion, ever having installed a new program into government, we can do it on trial basis, six months, a year, reassess it, see if it is accessed, see if it has been helpful, see if the cost is what it's being projected, and reevaluate it at a great period of time. The only weaknesses I see in this is, it's been stated that it might inhibit our discussions and shouldn't. I think we should be able to talk about anything, whether we're being videotaped, audiotaped, and whether it's being produced or not. And the cost is definitely something we will have to consider if we want to put out. And the only threat, I don't see threats, I just think it's a greater transparency in government. And so that's my end of the discussion on it. Let me finish yours.
It's a lot of money. So we're looking at a total cost here, first year of ten grand. There's a license on top of that and the support staff on top of that, or is that first year of ten thousand?
That's the total.
Total, okay. In the second year, and then it reduces from ten to about eight thousand every year after that?
Well, it's actually, it reduces in year two because the licenses last for a certain amount of time. But the cost plus overhead go up because the, the cost of staff and overhead goes up every year. So while it drops a little bit in year two, over time it would go up. Just a couple of points to make. So in, in the first year, if you look at the cost of ten thousand five hundred and seventy dollars, that's seventeen hundred and eighty dollar in licensing. The reason, you know, it, it's not that it would inhibit your discussions. If a member of the public comes and records your discussion, audiotapes it, videotapes it, they, they can do whatever they want with it. When we record it, it's a public record and it falls under public record laws. So we're then required to review and redact information that we can't release as a public record, even though it was stated here publicly. So it requires us to go through every audiotape after every meeting and redact any information that you may have discussed. The point is, you're more loose in these meetings in how you discuss things, and you do say things that if it were a matter of a public record being released and not exempt, then we would have to redact it. We have to do that if we get a request from the public to have a copy of it. The difference is, your Wednesday meetings are very structured, they don't allow you to essentially disclose information that would otherwise be redacted. So if you're talking about some employee issue, somebody's social security number, financial information, there are things that by law we are required to redact, it's not even a choice. There are then things that are, that are our choice whether or not they're disclosed, and then there are things that have to be disclosed. So what I'll tell you is at ten thousand five hundred and seventy, and let me say this first, in eleven years that I've been here, I think we've had three requests for copies of the audiotapes. In the first year, at ten thousand five hundred and seventy dollars, with an average cost of forty-five dollars for a request, and the average cost is different, if someone comes in and requests an audiotape of a three-hour meeting, staff have to listen to three hours of meetings to see if there's any redactions versus an hour meeting, then it would be, you know, less cost. But on an average cost of forty-five dollars, that means we'd have to have two hundred and thirty-five requests a year. Like I said, we've had three or four maybe requests in the eleven years that I've been here. It doesn't stop people from being able to come in and request it, there is a charge to do that. And as I just said, you know, on an average, probably around forty-five dollars. And that's because a staff has to sit there and listen to it for an hour or two hours, and make redactions, and, and then burn a copy and provide a CD, and that's what it costs. So, you know, it definitely, based on, based on the utilization we have so far, is not a cost-effective option. The issue of transparency is, anyone can come in and get it anytime they want, so it's available, they just have to pay for it. Typically, what the board's position has been, is if something becomes costly enough that it's less expensive for us to invest and do something like this than we would do it. But if it's less expensive based on the small number of requests we get, then we're subsidizing a, a program for a small number of people, basically. Now, I've been told, well, how many requests do you need? I'll get people to come in and request it. I mean, that's probably not a reason for us to do it. I mean, if we have a natural course of requests, that's, that's one thing. If we have an inflated, purposeful attempt to make us come up with five hundred copies of something, of course, that's an issue.
I know, never do that. Don't, don't you think possibly the limited request is because of the cost? It would limit to me requesting it, I couldn't afford that every week.
To be honest with you, the requests that we have, people don't know the cost upfront. It's been after the fact that, so, no, I don't think so. It may be for those people that have requested it that don't want to come back and request more because they don't want to pay it. But generally, the public isn't aware that this is what it costs until we actually give them a cost estimate, and we have to do that for each request. And like I said, there's variables that determine what it's going to cost, giving you an average cost of forty-five dollars. But, I mean, it could, you know, some meetings go five hours long, and some meetings require a lot of redaction, which is going to require a lot of software work. Which also raises another question, because then people all of a sudden are going, why are you taking stuff out of the audiotape? And, you know, create suspicion about why we're doing that. And, and as I've said, any member of the public can come and report it, and it's their privately-owned information then, rather than our public record. There are different rules that apply, so.
Well, I don't know, the argument here, we've never had a five-hour meeting, but we've had a four-hour one.
We've had a close one.
But I just, and, and also in the email that the administrator sent me, he said that he was working with IT to determine a, a more efficient cost method to meet the speed as well.
I, I definitely want you to know, I've been trying to figure out a way to do this much less expensively and make it happen. You know, we had a request from a prior board member, we got a good request. The board, you know, we haven't had, or two or three board members have directed us to do this because really, this is the cost, and the problem is the staff time. I mean, it's, it's hard for me to get the cost of staff time. You know, the other, the other thing is, there are certain things that staff, we're not, we're not allowed to charge for this, but we're required to pay for it. When it's an issue that involves a legal decision, well, our support staff can go through and redact information that is required to be redacted, there's some things where they have to go consult counsel. And, and to be honest with you, the cost that I gave you here doesn't account for that. We can't charge for that.
Under the, the, recently, the public records law, local governments and state agencies can't charge for attorney time when used to review public records for exceptions to disclosure. So it's a, it's a, the legislature's put that as a cost to people. Local government is basically the attorney time in responding to these types of requests.
And there will be those times, and we would train our staff the best we could to what the requirements are for what we're required to redact, what we can redact. It'll probably be most of the time where it's something we can redact, where they have to go to counsel and say, do you redact this or not? And, you know, counsel, they have to take their time to do it. So there are other costs, I mean, I tried to give you just a rough estimate. And, you know, actually, since we last talked, the licensing costs increased, unfortunately.
In a week?
No, 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 since the last time.
Oh, since we talked about it.
The licensing cost went up to three hundred and fifty dollars per license. That's another thing that will happen to us, each time you license something, and you notice with technology, the cost goes up as well. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't know that there's a lot of room for me to, to get, get you guys a much better cost. I mean, basically, if you want to do it this way, probably what the cost is going to be at a minimum, and it will go up each year. And if this cost estimate doesn't reflect those things that we wouldn't be able to charge for, and that's mainly, you know, the time of counsel to review inquiries by staff if we, if we need it. Now, the other thing is, this only assumes a staff time for each Tuesday and Thursday meeting to review and make the redactions of one hour. So I took an average of meetings saying they're going to last an hour. If they last two hours, right, if the average is two hours, you can take this support staff time of seventy-seven hours, and it becomes fourteen thousand, fifteen, fifteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars. So it can very easily go up quickly, depending on how long our meetings go. I just, I listed the assumptions so you would, you would know what assumptions I used, but, and you can extrapolate it based on what you all believe.
And some meetings are counter, you know, into that average as well. And is it unreasonable to say if we did a six-month trial, we would have the licensing and say half the staff time, say about five thousand dollar trial to see if it's accessed, if it's utilized, if it's beneficial?
Well, my guess is, actually, in the first year, it's going to take a little more staff time than what I actually estimated because they're going to have to be trained, and they're going to have to get experience using the software. You know, it's audio editing software. And, you know, it's going to take time for IT to set them up and answer their questions. So, you know, I just gave you, this is a flat cost if we're going along and doing it. There's assumptions I didn't put in here. But, you know, it's kind of like, when you're a new commissioner, you get an iPad, and, you know, just get an iPad and know how to do everything on it. It takes a lot of training and time for you to be able to do it. It's the same thing for our staff with a new software program, especially something like this, because they're not, we don't, we haven't hired people who are trained in, you know, audio technology, audio digital technology. So my guess is, it, it's going to take probably a little more time than I estimated. This was just based on the one hour per meeting for the two meetings per week of them being able to review it, so. The licensing you can't buy in a six, six-month, I mean, you pay.
What licensing do you, why can't we just be putting a file on our webpage?
Because you, you need the soft, it's a software licensing to do the editing to the audio file for the things we're required to redact. You can't just take the audio file and post it.
Right. Well, don't we edit them now? I mean, redact them now?
We redact them now, but as I said, we've had three requests in eleven years that I've been here for the audio files. And so we have a program that we can use, and it's very fast enough because she's had to do it. It's very conversely and very difficult to use, but because we have minimal requests, we don't go out and buy a program that we're going to use three times in eleven years, we use other technology. It is, it is old. I mean, actually, there's been times where, you know, we've needed a copy of a three-hour meeting and the software we have can't even pull three hours worth of time because it's, the file's too big for it to be able to modify it, so we have to do it in chunks. But as I said, it's not been an issue because we've had very few requests for it. I'm not saying if it were available, the people wouldn't make, look at it more often, I'm not, I'm not arguing that. I'm just, I'm just giving you either the facts, so. And regardless of cost, and I said this over and over, it didn't matter if it cost a hundred thousand dollars. If you guys say, we're doing it, then we're doing it.
Well, it wouldn't matter, a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I'm just, yeah.
Ten thousand, you know, it's pretty minimal compared in light of our budget, but it's significant, and it's worth the discussion.
I'm not for transparency, I think that's a good thing. I do have concerns on several pieces. The annual increase cost, because the percentage goes up every year. What's it going to look like in twenty years? I always think about sixty months, the beginning is when I get started thinking, sixty months, and then a hundred and twenty months, and two hundred and forty months, what's this program going to look like in that five, ten, twenty-year mark? What are the costs going to be down the road? Because what we do today is going to have lasting effects on future, even though we can't find a board that's going to have its future effects because of the cost. And then someone else will have to deal with it by rating it in if it gets out of control or something. And I'm not a big government-type person. My, I have concerns on basic fundamental also. And it's a basic participation in government. Right now, there's almost an apathy sometimes on the public, they don't get involved, they don't come to the meetings, and they, they, they're not here. So is it an attempt to try to bring more people to pay attention to what's happening? Yes, I can see that, but at the same time, some of the people just need to take a moment, like, like Tom, the League of Women Voters, and the people who are here every day. You know, I have to give you guys credit, you come, you listen, you pay attention. And then they bring that back, and that's a good thing. So I'm worried that, that these guys will disappear. I, I don't want to see you leave, just because it's on audio file. You know, I like to see some public participation in our meetings, so it makes me believe that somebody cares. And the other part of that is, is I see our staff right now is, really, they work really hard. And this is going to add a few hours. What's our month, what's the weekly load that's going to add hour-wise to do this?
Well, two meetings, an hour each, fifty-two weeks, a hundred and four hours.
Are we looking at?
That's if it's an hour, you know, I, I mean.
With the workload our staff has now, are we looking at increased FTEs? Or, I mean, that's what my biggest worry is, they're already working at a very hard maximum capacity. Are we going to have to increase our FTE to be able to accommodate something like this?
So.
Full-time equivalent.
I've said this before.
Sorry.
We didn't, we began recording these to make it more efficient for our staff to be able to produce minutes. We're not required by any law to record meetings. We're not, we're required to keep minutes, and we're only required to keep minutes regarding the main topics. We're not required to provide detailed minutes. We do, we provide very detailed minutes because we do record them. And anyone could go to the minutes, and if there's something significant that they wanted more detail on, they could come in and request it. Moving from the fact that this was meant to reduce the workload to our staff, to now adding workload is an issue. I mean, it is an issue, and it likely will result at some point in us coming back and saying, you know, it might be point two-five FTE that we need additionally, you know. It could be more, like, like I said, it's, I think it would be less than that. I think I made, just for purposes of demonstrating the cost, I made conservative estimates, believing that our staff could review, you know. We're almost at an hour now, you know, we're still have to work, I forget. If they could review to redact information an hour for every, on average for a meeting they have. I don't know if that's a good estimate or not, it just was for purposes of demonstrating the cost. So if it turns out to be two hours, even if you do the math, that fourteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars in staff time is almost a half FTE for us. So that has, that's coming from somewhere.
That's, that's my concern, is, is at what point are we going to have to increase our staff to be able to do this? And then they're just increasing the size of government.
Yeah, and, and I'm not a big government person either. I am one that is responding to the requests and needs of the people. And yeah, I like people here too, but you know what? There are still a few people who work during the day, and they cannot make it. Yeah, I was lucky to make it to one meeting a week, and I would have loved to made it all three. And there's no way I could do that, nor could afford the audiotapes. And I know we're not required to record them, I think it's great that we have them, we have them available. And if we don't want to do this, maybe we should consider subsidizing the cost of, of our requests, because we've only had three in the, in the last few years. If people want to request, maybe we should reduce that cost, where it doesn't break the bank for someone who is trying to work and hold a job and watch their government and be involved. I mean, there's a couple of different ways we can angle it if this is cost prohibitive in our budget. And it is something we can reevaluate and reinvent, it isn't a set in stone program, you know, either.
Every set in stone, we could do whatever we want. Those are my concerns.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not saying one of the other.
So our, our fee structure isn't based on a particular item that someone wants. It's based on the cost plus overhead for staff time associated with doing it, whether it be a request for an audio file or a request, I mean, you know, the planning documents that you guys get, we have people that request those. We don't, you know, whatever staff time it takes, plus the cost of materials is what we charge people, and we don't subsidize those. Since it's based on the global structure of staff time plus materials and supplies, it's very, in fact, I think it could also create a legal issue for us to subsidize this one particular action and not subsidize the other pieces that we charge off the same board. So I don't know that technically, that'd probably be a question for council, but I think it created some problems for us. You know, what we do is when we say, here's what this costs, you know, you guys, we, we provide what a hundred percent of the cost is, and our fee structure, you set what percentage of that amount of the hundred percent of the cost you want to collect from the public versus what partially paid by the, the general fund, essentially. And you do that for all of our fees. When it comes to staff time in a public request, we've got a hundred percent of a public request, so that's set by you all. If you wanted to reduce that, it would not only just subsidize this, but it would subsidize everything that would involve staff time. So just, you know, and, you know, maybe council can look into it differently, but.
I, I mean, there, there's always the potential for challenges when you start picking and choosing amongst the, sort of the content of what you're looking at, and whether, and how you treat things differently based upon content. I can, I'm happy to look to see if I can plan a specific guidance. My guess is probably. Um, my guess is probably there isn't, but I, I do see that there could, problems could arise and people could, could challenge them frequently. We get very large public records requests that require extensive staff time. Um, and almost universally, the response is, well, I don't wanna pay that, I still want the materials. Um, and so I can see if we are subsidizing staff time, because that's the vast majority of what, what is the cost of a public records request is staff time. I can see that there would be potential issues if we, if we were subsidizing staff time for one type of content and not for, in general.
So when we say they, like I said, we've only had three of these and relatively speaking, I know it's not a cheap cost for maybe an individual, but relatively speaking compared to some of the big requests, like the MERS request that we have was thirty, thirty-four, thirty-six hundred dollars. So, you know, and that's a public records request, whether it's from a particular, you know, from someone who's representing someone or an, an individual, so.
So on the legal issue then, so picking and choosing what we're, um, helping with content would be picking and choosing putting these files online and not other, uh, public meetings also fall under that legal concern?
Well, I, I guess it's, it, there's always challenges when you try to put some stuff online versus what you don't put online. I mean, ultimately, the board's decisions sort of have to meet a reasonable person's standard. You have to, you have to have reasons for why you're making distinctions between things. And so, um, right now, uh, the Wednesday meetings are available online through RVTV because that's the technology that exists to put those online. Um, and, and so could someone come in and say, well, you put Wednesday on, but you're not putting Tuesday and Thursday on, therefore you're picking and choosing the content? I, I mean, I think that we would have some reasonable arguments to make is to, to explain the difference between where the meetings occur and how the technology exists.
And what's discussed.
And what's discussed and sort of the, the concerns behind it. Um, but again, there's, there's always, there's always concerns when, um, we look at sort of content of, of what we're, if we're, if we're distinguishing between things not based upon, but based upon content. And that would be one of the, the concerns of this is, you know, we're supposed to treat, the, the Oregon statutes really view public records requests as public records requests. It doesn't, it doesn't, um, distinguish between what is the record. Um, the, a, a document recorded in a clerk's office is treated the same as a public record as the, the audio file of this is the same as the memo that Danny writes to you. I mean, they're all just lumped into this big package of public records. And so if we start looking at, this board has adopted a policy of, um, cost recovery for public records and if we start breaking down that policy based upon what is the content, then, then there are, there's a potential for challenges, not to say that those challenges would be successful, not to say that we couldn't be able to identify and defend why the board has been able to make a distinction or why the board's made distinctions, but it does cause the potential for challenges, which I think Danny said.
And if you chose to direct us to go ahead and facilitate this occurring, I think, you know, each case of whether we spend money to provide something to the public, because we publish things all the time to the public, it's, it's, it's an evaluation of the public good. So that's why I've told you before, if the benefit outweighs the cost, the board typically has said, you know, for example, you, you all passed the resolution on your opposition to limiting Second Amendment rights. I think we had thirty requests for the document in fifteen minutes. Now, if we had had one request for that document, it would have been less expensive for us to just provide the one copy to the one request, but it becomes more cost effective once we get to a certain number and depends on what issue we're talking about and how much it costs to post it publicly online. And so we have, we had, we do have a way to defend that, I guess is what I'm telling you.
I see.
And in this case, you know, as I said, three requests, which costs forty-five dollars each versus spending ten thousand dollars, a thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which would require two hundred and thirty-five requests, uh, it, it, it's, it's not the same argument as, for example, the document, you know, Second Amendment document we published. And there've been various documents that we have not, the board has said, you know, I'll usually come to the board and say, hey, we had four hundred requests for this. And so it's costing us more money and, and the citizens more money than if we just posted. That usually doesn't happen when we have things that are made in small, requests that are made in small numbers. There are also legal arguments and actually people do contest our fees mostly when they determine that they believe it's in the public good that if you release, they'll go over to court and challenge whether or not they should have to pay the fees. Um, those usually have to do with large records requests where, I mean, we've had some of the ACLU's request of fifteen thousand dollars in cost worth of records. And they want us to go back twenty years and pull our archives and pull every file that has to do with everything that we're having to deal with in jail. And so we're spending, and honestly, in most cases, it's a fishing expedition. Let's see if there's anything we can find in their records that we can use and so, but they'll say, it's in the public good to know if anything happened in the jail, we shouldn't have to pay twenty thousand dollars and they'll go over to court and we can agree to reduce the cost to avoid litigation or we can go and fight the cost. So there's all sorts of different levels of why we charge and why we don't charge and what people can do about it.
Well, I brought it to you because I do feel that personally the benefit does outweigh the cost and I'm not a big spending person as represented by my standard salaries. So, um, and you can stand to disagree and we can move on or whatever you wanna do.
I have two questions I had, this is more towards Joel and Danny. Um, we have a fee schedule, correct? And we approve that fee schedule every, every year as part of, and part of that is, kind of for charging for different fees throughout the county. Would it be, what, I think this might touch on what you're trying to achieve, but is there a possibility to be able to put the audio recording in a fee schedule and say it's gonna be ten dollars? Uh, that, you just mentioned subsidy and that's why that sort of triggered my head. Is there a possibility we just put it in the fee schedule and say this audio recordings of these meetings will be this much? And then set that annually over the board order as we do all of our other fee schedules?
Well, it would conflict, that's the problem with how you, see, we've been challenged three times in court about how we derive our fees. We've won every time. We've won every time because we're consistent. This would create an inconsistency, not only because you would be charging less, but because the basis for our fee structure doesn't necessarily look at the item, the basis in costing for our fee, fee structure doesn't look at the item. It looks at the elements of preparing whatever it is we're asked to prepare, staff time, overhead, materials, so forth.
It would subject this to potential litigation.
Well, that was Joel's point.
Yeah, I, I mean, and again, it does, it does, and it doesn't just open up a challenge on the cost of providing the audio itself, I would imagine.
It challenges our whole fee structure.
Yeah, that, that would be my concern. Yeah, no one's, I don't think anyone's gonna challenge that we're gonna charge less for the recording. My concern would be that's gonna open up, you're charging less for the recording, so why are you charging more for the other ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of things?
When the basis of how you cost for these things are these elements.
When you're talking to a guy who doesn't like things being done, so.
Well, I'm just answering your question. I mean, I, I honestly, really, I, this doesn't, if you all told me to make this happen, I'll make, we'll make it happen. I mean, it's, but.
Let me sort of set, because understanding how that works and understanding the legal piece, that's why I wanted to bring it in this sort of scenario. One of the things I've always felt was important is to go electronic. You got an experience of that over the city of Bedford. Having electronic documents to begin with makes things easier for transparency in government.
Yeah, I guess.
If I'm tying it, let me finish my time. Right, um, so could that be wrapped into a discussion on the bigger picture? Because look, we, we, basically, I understand ten thousand, thirteen thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket with three hundred and twenty million dollar budget. It's really insignificant. And is the money there to do it? Yes. The way, what we've done over the last few years to, to eliminate deficit spending and that kind of stuff has really had a, a, a big impact on our financial stability as we go forward. So is the money there to do it? Yeah, I, I see we have that ability. As, do we wanna put too much and we start doing all these projects just because we have money? Not necessarily. But at the same time, how do we take and move our organization, because that's what I think you're trying to do, move it into the twenty-first century, so to speak, with that transparency concept? How, how do we be more open with the public? And I've always believed that that basic concept of going electronic, because there's costs to producing every, all the papers, there's costs to all that kind of stuff, and maybe that could all be put into one discussion that we could, and maybe even, maybe even something like that would even cover the audio piece with the licensing. So because what I get complaints on is sometimes the, the press is going, well, we don't have the supporting documents that you get in your package. They just get the agenda and everything else, but it.
No, 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 we've, we've made it electronic where they can pull up the board letter and the supporting documents that support what your agenda items are.
I'm just saying, some of them have made that comment to me, that's all.
Well, they have it available to you.
If they might access it or not, that's, that's their deal, but.
I've always been able to get the supporting documents.
So that's what I'm wondering, would you be interested in sort of taking, having a bigger discussion on this thing?
I'm not sure I see the need, uh, because everything is on, on the webpage, but this portion.
Okay.
And the documents are on there, the supporting documents are on there and they could be accessed. So this is the only thing that can be accessed of what we do in government.
Well, it can be accessed, it's just not, someone has to request it.
Right. That's right.
Let me look a little deeper into it, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Because what I really wanna find out before I say yes or no is, is what's the long-term effect? I wanna know when sixty months from now, how much this is gonna be estimated to cost? And, and are we prepared to go down that road with FTE increase potential and everything? I wanna look at the full piece, but I don't see any potential FTEs on this and I wanna get that full, full picture on it as we discuss it, so.
And I think followers are important and I would wanna see that within a year. I, I don't want to say sixty months, I wanna look at it in a year, what our cost is, how effective was the program? And I think it's an important piece of this. But yeah, I think the benefit's there.
Yeah, I understand Danny's concern though, only three requests and this is the cost of it, that, and they're always famous with the three requests, you know. But, I mean, let's, let me look at the, the bigger picture of what's gonna cost us down the road and the increase in, because it's not just what's happened this year to do it. We might have, we might have room and, and staff time to go do that, but are we gonna have room and staff time next year or following year? At what point do they become overburdened and we have to increase? And that's kinda where the, I wanted to take a, a longer prologue with.
I wouldn't say we have room and staff time to do it now, just to be honest with you. It, it's gonna require us to do something about staffing.
Okay, and I'd like to have information on our FTEs before I make a decision.
Well, I'd just like to compare for one person to request, um, one meeting a week, which is another, I, I've spoke, I know a legal woman voter said lots of times, Thursday they can't come. One, one meeting a week is about a hundred and four dollars a month, i- if it's a twenty-six dollar minimal tape cost. And that's the cost of our program. That's ten thousand dollars, over ten thousand a year.
Is there any other local government in Jackson County that's doing this?
I don't really care. I defer to this one.
No, I'm, I'm asking that question.
I have no clue.
Because if somebody else is doing it, we can see what they've done, what reality is. That's why I'm looking at it as a.
I believe Climb Falls puts theirs on, um, on their website, but I'll check with, um, them over there.
We, we, we do post minutes from every meeting and as I said, they're detailed, they're taken from the recordings. They're not word for word, but they're very detailed. They provide adequate information as required by public records laws about the topics and decisions that are made at the board meetings. Um, and if someone looks at something and wants more detail, they can come in and request it. So the inform, it's not that the information is getting out there. Um, the other thing is, you know, I get really nervous about comparing ourselves to other counties. A lot of other counties do things that, I mean, technically aren't legal. I mean, I know many counties who violate public meetings laws, I know many counties who release documents that they're not supposed to release based on restrictions, you know, I've seen it. And I will say that you all know, we try to keep our agenda tight, we try to make sure you're staying on what we agendasize. And so I don't know, looking at other local governments and especially Climb Falls or Josephine County or someplace like that would be the model that I would s- suggest you compare what we would do to, because we wouldn't be that loose.
It is, it's like comparing one county to another, it's a more practical thing.
Make you see what other people do, you know, like who does this, what's, what, how they get there, what's their, um, cost associated with it? Are they subsidizing the program? What's, what's their, what's their effects over a period of time? Have they noticed an increase with the public participation? Have they got, what the public comment is as a result of doing it?
And how much interaction they've gotten, not really how they've done it, but how has it reached out to the people?
It has it, i- is it, is it effective in what, is it worth the money and is it effective of what they're trying to accomplish?
Okay, so we'll revisit it then. Um, thank, I'm sorry, and if anybody else is on board.
I'll keep trying to figure out if we can make it less expensive.
All right, it's pretty, it's pretty bare bones, ten thousand, I, you know, seven to ten thousand, kind of is the range, okay? It's not unaffordable and it's, I think it's really, really a good thing for what we do in reaching out to the citizens we serve.
Right. Maybe more information than what's.
Okay, do reach out as well and we'll, we'll put on the agenda again soon. Okay, third thing on the agenda is discussion of the use of staff time and county resources for non-county business. This is Mr. Bryntall.
We're kind of, this is kind of coming out of our liaisons from the other day when we're talking about what is, as a commissioner, a lot of times, we do a lot of things that we wouldn't normally do if you weren't a commissioner. So we're in a position, uh, going to different meetings, going to different events and participating with, uh, basically the people. And how do we find ways to be able to balance that, uh, our participation with the public at these different programs and still meet public meeting law and still be able to be transparent with the public in all those aspects? So we, with our, during liaisons, we kind of decided that we're going to antagonize this one to have discussions because we thought it was important, because, uh, previous boards are, had all treated this differently with scheduling and stuff. So this is what revolves around is basically our schedules and, and how we address those types of things. Previous discussions are, that's, that's, anything we do, have staff put on the calendar. This is the previous boards, we calendarize things. It helps us prevent from being in a position where, where the public might think that we're in a public meeting, but we're not, so everything's published in our, you know, when we go to AOC, we, I, we publish the fact that we make a public meeting even though there's exclusions under Oregon law that they don't have to be published under AOC. We just go the extra mile to be the transparent organization. Um, so, and I got the feeling that at the time that the board decided that we wanted to, if it's a, something that's not on our liaison assignment, that we schedule it ourselves. So we're, we're identifying our liaison assignments as the areas in which staff is allowed to, uh, schedule our schedule. Am I correct? Is that's what kind of what we had a general consensus of the?
I think it's one of the liaisons if it's about, um, like, like going to the, um, chamber luncheon, it's not my liaison, but it's get scheduled, I'm scheduled by staff. So I don't know specifically.
Well, that's exactly what I'm talking about. If, when we, the liaison is kind of consensus that it was, your liaison assignments, staff focuses on that and that's where your staff time is gonna be used. And that's the chamber luncheon, we're a member of the chamber, um, but that's what would give you, that's what allows staff to do it because we're a member of the member chamber. But if you went to the Ashland Chamber, that wouldn't be allowed because we don't, they're not, that would be considered a non-county function because Ashland Chamber is not where we have our membership.
Or the Eagle Point, I'm a room chamber, I put on my own schedule, because those are my own little busy things I do.
Can I clarify for a moment?
Say.
There, there's not been a difference in how commissioners do this. We have a policy and it says that county resources won't be used for personal purposes. Commissioner Bryntall asked staff first to revisit RSVP himself and his wife for a dinner at Sustainable Valley, which had nothing to do whatsoever with county business. Originally, the county C funded Sustainable Valley, but we provide no funding, we aren't a member, we don't participate on the board, and staff said, you know, our policy. And staff said, you know, our policy prohibits us from RSVPing you and your wife for this. Commissioner Bryntall asked also that staff, I think the word was schedule, maybe register, but I think it was scheduling for an event. I don't remember the exact event, but also something that wasn't county-related. And we have a policy that prohibits it. So Commissioner Bryntall brought up, well, aren't we using staff resources if we put it on our counter? Counterweight is a way for you all to let people know where you're going to be. And as council said, likely appropriate, but when we start using staff resources to make scheduling for things that are personal to you, and that becomes an issue, it, it comes an issue with our policy. So if you're, I, I just want to make sure this isn't a difference in.
Let me clarify, you basically said that I asked for something that wasn't a county function, because I received that invitation to the Sustainable Valley piece, and I had no idea that we weren't part of that Sustainable Valley piece anymore. So when I'm asking to schedule me, I'm thinking of something that we're still participating with, and to do that, because that's been the practice, is, so it wasn't necessarily that I went out there to try to do something and use staff time to schedule something.
I wasn't.
Well, I just kind of came across that, but, um, so, understanding what is county resources, or, or county function, what's not a county function, just clarifying that stuff. So I'm having that so we don't have this confusion. So, yeah, identifying, saying, okay, if you're going to the Eagle Point Chamber, and I'm going to the Eagle Point Chamber, because I got invited for something, over the last three years, I basically said, yeah, well now I'm, or whoever's staff, I'm going to the Eagle Point Chamber, and please schedule that time period. And so now, what we're basically, what we're saying is that we're going to schedule that ourselves, because that's not part of a county function. But I just want to make sure that we're having a very candid conversation, because when we go down here, we are going to be responsible at this point, yeah, personally responsible, in my opinion, if we both show up at the same event, and we fail to put that on our calendar, and somebody perceives that we are in a public meeting, there's no, in my opinion, there's no safety check.
Well, just, just because something is on your calendar does not mean that public meeting law notices have been met. So if both of you were to show up at the Eagle Point Chamber, and were to discuss or deliberate something towards which the board would make a final decision, so, I'll just lay your words, just having it on your calendar would not satisfy the public meeting requirements. I do agree with Commissioner Bryntall, it is on, um, the individual commissioners to ensure that, um, meetings of, of a quorum of the board, and unfortunately, we have only three people on the board, unfortunately, to guess, but a quorum is two of you. So anytime there's two of you in a room, and there's deliberation or discussion towards a, the final decision the board would make, you've got a quorum, so.
Or receiving input.
Or, that's part of the deliberations, the receiving input. Um, it's tough, but, I mean, putting it on the, on the, the county calendar for C O A staff, or C O A, C A L, or B O C staff, isn't going to, I guess, address the public meeting concern.
If it's a matter of public meeting, then it is a matter of public business, and we do notice it. So that has nothing to do with your calendar, or whether or not staff registered you for something. If you tell staff that we're, well, and let me, let me speak to one of them, or other staff. When a commissioner comes to one of them and says, do something, they typically do it. That doesn't mean that what they did complied with policy or not, but you have quite a bit of influence and authority when you come and tell staff to do something. And it's not until one of the staff go, hey, this is kind of weird, I'm being asked to do this, is this okay? That we go, no, shouldn't have been doing that, or that's not okay. So if staff have done that for you, Doug, for personal reasons, it does violate county policy of using staff resources for doing it. It doesn't make it right because they did it, and that, that's the whole point of, you know, bringing the issue forward is.
This, that's the whole point of this discussion. You keep saying it violates county policy, whatever. Here's the, here's the gist of it. We are taking responsibility to making sure it's publicly noticed. And that kind of got bypassed, and my point didn't bypass here, in this, when you guys did that, it was, we're taking responsibility for that public notification at this point in time. And having this on our calendar, or having staff ensure that this is on the calendar, many times in the last three years that I've been here, because of this, it's been caught. The staff that says, we both scheduled for this, we haven't publicly noticed this, you want it publicly noticed. And because of that's the way it was being done, it's, it's actually saved us to make sure that public notification has gone out.
But you actually have an agenda item to discuss this every week.
Review of calendars. And if we forget something, or if we forget to put it on the calendar, or if we have something that we're so buried in other work that we didn't do that part a hundred percent, and it results in a public meeting, then we're the ones that are held accountable to that. And so that, I was just saying, that safety check, or that checkpoint, is no longer there, to someone basically saying, okay, this is this, is this. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that we're taking on that responsibility ourselves. So if there's that there, we can't ever sit back and say, well, that will be in front of whatever.
I think the safety check's still there, Doug, it just requires you to put it on your calendar, rather than use staff resources to do it.
And I, I agree, I'm not confused over it, I haven't had a confusion on it yet, but, because I do take care of my personal on my calendar. For instance, the Fair Board meeting, and I've had that put on the calendar, I've had it noticed, because occasionally I want to go to those, because we have the new appointments. And I've put on my calendar, but staff has noticed it. And you even said, has this been noticed? If it hasn't been noticed, I should leave. And that's the responsibility we take, putting it on our calendar, leave if it isn't noticed, and making sure it is noticed. And we do it with our calendars, we do it with our calendars we speak about at this, um, Thursdays. I don't think it's, to me, it's not a problem. And I don't have a problem taking care of that on my calendar.
It's not a problem until you have, here's an example. You're now on the O N C board. The O N C board has always met traditionally on Thursday. You're going to miss meetings at some point in time to be able to attend those meetings. And recently, I was in the press, because I missed so many meetings, they did a report that I was attending O N C meetings or other meetings and replaced them. They just said that I was missing a meeting. You miss that meeting, you're not there to say, hey, this needs to be calendared. And when, nobody knows about it. And if you miss it, it's because you may or may not have it. So that's why I just wanted to be sure that there are gaps, that you're going to, we're going to have to take responsibility for here, because there's meetings you're going to miss, because you're attending other meetings that are just as important to the county, and you're not going to be able to sit there and say, this is calendared, and then we show up, and we'll take that responsibility. So we're going to have to say, we're going to have to come up with something as a board, just like what we did at the Fair Board meeting tonight, that, hey, is this calendared?
And, and make sure it was.
Right.
So I think that's the responsibility we take. The more we take on, the more responsible we have with it. And I, have you had a problem with it being a, a conflict, it wasn't noticed?
There was, there was the first few years, we had a few conflicts, and things, and I looked at the other commissioners, have we noticed? No? Uh-oh, okay.
And then one leaves, it's no big deal. Yeah, if you miss it, you leave.
Or dis, or dissipate, or do things, you know, there's ways to, to deal with it, but I just wanted to make sure that we're aware of all that, because I have had those conflicts in the past, and that's kind of why we did the way we did it. So, I don't want to see those conflicts arise in the future.
I don't agree with changing, I don't agree with changing our policy. I don't agree with putting more on staff unless it's putting our audio on file.
That's a conflict.
I think I can take care of my schedule. And if, and if you don't, Howard, don't find, you don't ask?
Don't know.
Well, I don't know what the problem is, so, I don't know. I don't have any problem putting mine on. And if we have a conflict, we'll do, let's deal with it, and see if we need to change things at that point.
Both of these instances that I aware of, and there's probably others with other commissioners too.
Yeah, have you seen what me, I was kind of thought about?
Well, I seen the job, because it was your issue, and I wanted to explain why staff said it was on the agenda. But, um, you know, both of these issues were of the result of two or three emails exchanging. And to be honest with you, it takes about ten seconds to put it on your calendar yourself. It took more time and effort to send an email telling someone RSVP me and my wife for this, or whatever the issue is, than it does just to open up the calendar and put it on your calendar. Takes more of your time and their time. And as I said, unless it's related to county business, and that's also a question, because they look at things that you guys give. And you may, in your mind, know it's related to county business somehow, but they look at it and go, I don't understand how this is related to county business, not even know what this is. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it honestly creates more work than just putting it on your calendar yourself. This wasn't just about putting something on calendars, though, this was RSVPing with an event outside and putting it on a calendar.
To that, like I said, I thought we were still involved in Sustainable Valley, so I would have thought it was a follow-up policy. You keep going back to that one, but.
Well, even if that were the case, Doug, in that case, RSVPing, you would be appropriate, but not your wife, and you had asked for both. So, you know, it's, it would be better for you to do it yourself, and then there's not a conflict there.
And, and, and obviously, there's lots of things, we'll learn as we go, and we ask for this to be done, let's say, well, that's a county, okay. Because a lot of things I don't know either, as well, if it's county business or not. And we can take care of it.
Well, and I said this a lot of times, if you disagree that staff should be doing something or not, just bring it to the board, and the board can direct us. We're, but, but for that, we're going to follow what the policy says, and all the ordinance.
And what is county business, that definition defining? I mean, as a commissioner, the county business is a lot different than it is as an administrator. You have a lot different business than you do, then as a commissioner, it's a lot different than a planning director, or a corrections director. You know, your job is totally different than what's considered county business, in my opinion, totally different compliance, because you have a whole different perspective on how things are done. So showing up to different events and meetings that you wouldn't normally do, because you're a commissioner, to stay in touch, stay informed, having information gathering from a lot of different sources, is part of being a commissioner. So what is county business?
Well, for instance, building a day dinner is not county business. But I'm going as a commissioner, I do not expect the staff to make my reservations for me, my husband, on my table, and I, but it will be noticed in case there's other commissioners there. You know, but I wouldn't probably be going had I not been a commissioner.
Really?
Yeah.
I haven't done one before, yeah.
So, you know, it's, it, I don't see it as an issue.
Farm Bureau.
Mm-hmm.
Farm Bureau meeting. Is that county business, technically? No. Is it a place where you gather a lot of information that helps you in the decision-making process as a commissioner? Yes.
If you're, if you're going there to talk to them about what the deprivation committee, then it's county business, you're, it's something that you're responsible for. If you're going just to have a dinner and listen, then that's different.
Yeah, if you're attending, that's what I'm trying to say. If you're attending and you're just back gathering information based on something that's going on somewhere, you know, it may or may not pertain to an ordinance down the road, or may, it's hard to say. I mean, the GMO issue, went to a lot of, a lot of Farm Bureau's, Academy Association meetings to listen to what's being said, and just understanding where they stood on the issue.
And I agree. We both went to that last Farm Bureau meeting, I made my own reservation, and put it on my calendar, it was noticed, because we both were there. All with county policy. I think it worked fine.
So, just making sure, I just want to be, make it clear.
Anything else? Okay. So input from County Council?
Uh, nothing.
Input from County Administrator, reviewing agenda items for the February tenth P O C board.
Okay, we'll have our annual special presentation on the airport, the A Z report that's run that each year. He usually kind of makes that a little bit exciting.
Creative, anyway.
One year he came dressed as Elvis, or he did it or something.
Just like once, yeah.
Consent calendar dismissed from your January twentieth meeting. Under discussion deliberation, basically two issues, first reading, second, scheduling the second public hearing, creating and adding in our ordinance, the County Worth Advisory Committee. Because, you know, our ordinance would be effective until sixty days after the second reading, and because the grant application came out yesterday, um, without any real prior notice, and the grant application is due February twenty ninth, we are also at the same time asking you to pass an emergency ordinance that would adopt it right away and be repealed upon the final ordinance. And we're doing that, exception under health and safety, safety meaning we can qualify for funds. I do, will tell you that I think all will be able to qualify for is about five hundred dollars to do, to help pay for the cost of supporting the staff time and the committee itself in this first round. Because you won't have a committee designated who have identified, uh, compensation rates, compensation rates, and, uh, all of the things that they have to identify in order for us to ask for money, including prevention and all of those types of things. So we're asking to pass an emergency, in my opinion, for five hundred dollars, but it's, you know, worth it to me, because it's something that we don't have to incur a cost for, or at least a portion of it, we don't have to cover it for cost. So you'll have the regular ordinance and the emergency ordinance, which is the exact same ordinance. I will bring to you, I think it's of the seventeenth, it's a Wednesday, right? The seventeenth meeting, an order authorizing us to apply for the grant application, so that will fall. The, the grant application, literally, we got noticed yesterday, and the due date is February twenty ninth, so. I wonder if it's going to be February twenty ninth, like every year?
I doubt it.
Would be very.
The next one is, we're authorizing amendment number one to commercial lease with living opportunities. This is, you guys approved two of these yesterday, and you're coordinating for space that are helping in service of buildings. It's an annual revenue of five thousand and forty dollars. It is coming to you, even though it's only a year contract, because of an extension to the currently existing year contract by amendment. The amount wouldn't require your authority, your approval at the time, as that exceeding major. And then the other one is that we're authorizing an application for real and personal property tax exemption approval with the Motorcycle Riders Association. So they're pretty much the only motorcycle club in the state that owns property and they receive grants actually from Oregon State Parks and Recreation for operation and maintenance of the property that they own, in which they use to operate, maintain toilet facilities, road access, trail maintenance, signage, et cetera. They also provide trash cleanup day each year on their property, plus on the surrounding B L M property that abuts trails, or connects trails between B L M and the private land property. They do roads, maintenance, trail maintenance, grooming and brush removal, along with that, on both B L M and their own land, with B L M's authorization. Toilet cleaning weekly, road, train signing, culvert cleaning, fencing, dead tree thing, camping area maintenance, set of pond clean out. They maintain two trail bridge crossings, they have a helicopter landing site, but they maintain water supply maintenance, just numerous other activities along with people that all ride up there. Most, well, almost all the members donate their heavy equipment for special tasks. They own three different trail machines for developing and maintaining the trails. They qualify as a five oh one C three, they've applied for personal rental property tax exemption under O R S three oh seven one one five, which is property purchased by nonprofit corporations for public park use. So there's actual statutory reference that allows this. And they do meet the requirements of that specific O R S three oh seven one fifteen, it's actually subparagraph two, in case you are interested in looking it up. The term of the real and personal property tax exemption will be July first of two thousand sixteen through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty six. That time limit is specified in statute as well, that they always come back and reapply to. What happens is, the assessor's office, they require to follow some established guidelines for calculating that law and property tax. And they, in this case, based on the calculation, proposed a tax exemption in a collective amount of three thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-two cents annually. The exemption covers include seven hundred and fifteen point eleven acres of Motorcycle Riders Association. The exemption covers include seven hundred fifteen point eleven acres of Motorcycle Riders Association properties. And then I add the specific tax laws, which I won't read to you unless you really, really want to be told information. So, if you have any questions, I'm out of mine.
We haven't given this to you in the past, the exemption?
Yes.
And they're, they're basically going for nonprofit status, so that's, that's the change. They haven't been nonprofit status. They've been modifying it.
They qualify as a five oh one C three and because their activities are for public parks, they don't limit the use to MRA. Anyone from the public can go up and use it. That's what qualifies it for. Doesn't mean you have to get it, but it qualifies it for and they ask for and they do provide a pretty significant public service of.
Where's that?
Oh, John's speaking.
John's speaking.
Oh.
Now, I'm a life member of the MRA, Motorcycle Riders Association, have been for a long time. So I have to declare anything that's in the law. Um, if there was.
He has the same benefits as anyone else from that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would say probably not, um, because you're not.
Solely individually.
Solely individually gaining a benefit related to this decision. Um, and it's not, I, I, it's probably not a business to which you, you'd be considered affiliated with. I mean, if you're concerned and the abundance of caution, you can disclose a potential conflict, but a potential conflict doesn't, does not exclude you from voting on it, but you might wanna just disclose. I don't think you need to, but in the abundance of caution, you might wanna disclose.
That's one of those, that's one of those non-county business meetings I go to all the time, their board meetings. This is what's going on because that's such a significant impact to the county.
Yeah, but I mean, if you are, if you're, if you're concerned about it, it most, it would likely be a potential conflict unless you were somehow personally benefiting from this. But I, I probably.
Something that I would get that no one else would.
Correct. Something, but yeah, something you or a family member would personally be getting.
Or the very few people, like they're saying, hey, if you pass this, we'll give you two thousand dollars worth of free whatever, and that's from.
Yeah.
Nothing like that. So I just wanted to make sure.
Just, my, my advice to you would be just state what you just stated and declare as a potential and then just, then you can go. If anyone has any questions or challenges to it, you can cover it yourself.
Okay, anything else? Do you need your executive session?
Well, you have some.
Oh, liaison! Oh, my gosh, where's my schedule? I'm done.
You do have more.
Me too!
You just wanted to jump to executive session.
You're president, you're chairman.
I lost my calendar, my schedule. Okay, so liaison committee, please. Do you want to start?
I have a, before, AOC was a very busy meeting on Monday. Very busy meeting. Uh, had briefings from, oh, let me get back here. Senator Roeven, Senator Hansel, Representative Vince, Representative Nathan, uh, governors, governors representatives. Uh, I could go on, I think there's a few more. Kozansky didn't really able to show up on the gun stuff. But, um, anyway, I had a lot of briefings on all the pieces of legislation that are in the process of coming down. And I, I'll give you guys all the stuff that's in, but I think the positions that were taken at AOC are now, if they're not posted, they should be posted by now, where the AOC stands on everything. One of the things on the public lands policy committee that we did do, that I wanted to highlight, was we reaffirmed resolution two thousand fifteen oh one, which is basically the request for a study of the transfer of certain federal lands to the state of Oregon. So, the association is still taking the position that the, uh, we need to start the discussion on what the cost benefit analysis would be to start moving the federal lands to the state of Oregon over to state ownership. Understanding that it's illegal to do it back down to the county level, but it's legal to do it from federal to state level. So, we're still trying to get the legislature, and that's one of the things that we're working on this session, we're gonna get the legislature to fund that study because that's the beginning of any type of process. A lot of it revolved around what happened in Eastern Oregon, Harder County. Judge Gratsky, uh, who is the judge for Harder County, basically took some time and wanted to thank the participation from the commissioners and the sheriffs across the state who participated in helping him and keeping his community safely secure as all this was happening in Harder County, while we did have that being on the ground, so wanted to relay his, his gratitude for sending those resources and supporting. But that transfer is one that we wanna keep going, we're, we're gonna maintain that moving forward. Uh, we went through the resolutions that we're looking for at the state level, I mean, at the national level. The state of Oregon Association of Counties has taken the lead, and we've done it for several years now, basically working with the National Association on coordination. So basically, we, we've redone our resolution, our federal resolution with NACO, urging all federal agencies to engage in exclusive coordination with state, local and tribal governments. This is basically surrounding a lot of the stuff that we've been working on that, I don't know if you're aware of that NACO resolution, that we've done over the last few years. And what that does, it allows, uh, tying the resources of staff to be spent at the national level to, uh, to work on that coordination piece and get it to where we wanna see it. Jackson County plus several other counties have been the ones that have helped develop that resolution. And I've carried it forward in the NACO for the last several years and will continue to do that. Also, the available resolution on there is amending our Title III of our SIS funds, for rural schools funds, basically to allow, to expand the usage of those Title III funds for reimbursement of patrol expenditures. Essentially, there's a lot of counties out there that have this, a large pot, that don't have the ability to spend it because of all the restrictions that are placed on those Title III funds. What they'd like to do is they'll use those to, um, hire law enforcement. Because of, uh, there's a belief that if we have more law enforcement on the ground in the federal lands, that the government isn't going to be so restrictive in the policy that they're coming down with. One of the, the travel management, I think you were there when, I think you were there, when we talked about the travel management plan for our local forests and what Robert Porter was doing on that dispute resolution piece. And you had us that big law enforcement, um, discussion saying, if we had more law enforcement, we wouldn't have these problems with people destroying things and we'd have the ability to get things under control. But this, they're shutting things down because they want to maintain or limit the damages. So it's kind of like, what's the real problem and where is the money to be reallocated to be able to prevent the damages to keep everything open for the public as much as possible? So that's where the discussion on the Title III's are.
Why, why are they doing this when we haven't had Title III funding for two years?
Because they're, they're sitting on.
Yeah, but anything anyone's sitting on, by law, has to have been obligated.
They're looking.
Or they can't have it, so.
Like you stated earlier, every county does things differently. And there's counties out there that look for retroactive and they'll do this.
Retroactive?
And there's.
And just based on fund balances, because there's no Title III funding anymore?
Right. Based on fund balances, you're right on. But there's, seems to be a flavor to be able to address it and do something with it, so. If there were, Congress was willing to pick it up and.
It's fund balances in county?
Just, just, for Title III.
For Title III.
Just so you know, we're not going to Jackson County.
Yeah, as far as we have.
We don't, we utilize it.
But they're obligated, yeah, we do have Title III fund balance. But federal law, under Title III, required at the end of the last appropriation, which was two years ago, that you have to have the funds obligated. In other words, you've already set what you're gonna use them for. You can keep them as long as you've obligated them to use them for that purpose, so.
Not everybody's as proactive as Jackson County is.
So they're trying to change, that you can change the purpose?
Right. So, it, it's basically, they're very restrictive on what they can and can't be used for.
For us, they're mostly used in search and rescue, and for us, they'll be spent down in the next two years.
One of the things is you're not, you can't buy supplies. You can't buy a rope anticipating a search and rescue. You can only buy a rope during a search and rescue, before that search and rescue. So, that's the way, that's the way the laws interpret by a lot of counties.
You can buy it and then get reimbursed when you use it. That's, Title III works on a reimbursement basis.
Right.
So, I wouldn't say you can't buy, you can buy stuff, but you only get reimbursed by Title III if you use it.
Everybody interprets that differently. I've had that discussion with a lot of commissioners across the state, and I've heard that same argument. And they've been told, well, my council said I can't do that. So they're, they're stuck with what their rules are, so they're trying to get really clear defined rules on that so that there's nothing, that there's no possible anybody crying foul.
And that's at the federal level.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, yeah, we're, we're the, we're the hour, we're the middle of the hourglass. Everything comes to us before it happens. Legislative concept two seventy seven is going, is coming through. And that's gonna be removing the wolves from the state major species list.
They, they've already done that, right?
Not, they, not legislatively. The action was taken through the agency. So what's gonna hap, what they're doing here is they're taking, the agency is being sued by environmental groups. The same environmental groups that basically agree to the wolf plan. The wolf plan remains in effect and will not change.
And still provides the same protections.
Impprives the protection. However, the environmental groups are now suing the state based on the agency's decision to delist. What the, what the legislature will be doing in this concept will be affirming that decision by legis, through legislation, basically removing any potential for litigation. Because this is now a legal law deal, not just an agency decision.
Although, you have legislation, they can still fight under the Species Act.
Right. But there, there's always something out there, but this is a step to. Yeah, so this is, this is the positive piece, I see. Uh, with all this crazy stuff that's coming out there, this is one positive piece. Those are the big ones that came out of the public lands, natural resources. We did have some bioactions and we did discuss on the principles of the forest management reformation reform legislation. And that's part of the package, you know?
The Redford County trust lands, state forests.
It's basically all state lands, anything in state, with the principles. No, it's, it's for federal forest management reform legislation, what the principles are that we want and we see that. So if we look at, if we send AOC or, let's say, let's say I'm representing AOC, that's what I do, I sit on the National Public Lands Committee with NACO. Know that list of principles for federal forest management reform is, is the list of principles that I go by. I don't use my own information, that's the way it has to happen, just like if we say, Commissioner Roberts, we want you to go represent us on OLC and this is the principles we want you to run under. So same concept. Very good, I think it's a very positive coordination-based, uh, local control-based concept, bringing that around. So those principles are in line with Jackson County's philosophy. And I encourage to take a good look, hard look at them, they're all in the AOC websites, um, because that's the official, yeah. So it's information in there, we'll read that. On the public safety side, DPSST made a presentation that was really interesting. They're looking for funding, increased funding for DPSST. And I thought it was important to bring this back and discuss it because we're having some of the same issues with our jail. Uh, being able to hire people, as you're well aware of. But, um, they knew they, they're asking for additional funding of a couple million dollars, two point five million, to increase the classes of the state, for the academy classes. This, we have currently, in the state of Oregon, we've really, uh, looked into it. And we have vacant positions that are not enrolled in DPSST-based courses, academies. Law enforcement police, there's four hundred and twenty-five vacancies state-wide right now. Corrections has a hundred and ninety-nine at the county level that are vacant right now. We're just about, what, four or five of those. Parole probation has fifty-five, and telecommu, or dispatchers, telecommunications, a hundred and thirteen vacant positions. Those are all DPSST certified positions to be in the field. And then it took another hard look at, um, the people that are eligible to retire in two thousand sixteen. And there's another, uh, four hundred and ninety-five law enforcement physicians that are eligible to retire in two thousand sixteen. Corrections has another hundred and eleven, parole probation a hundred and forty-five, and telecommunications, communications has a hundred and sixty-six. So if you add those, what people can do next year, what the possibility is based on the current vacancies and try to get these people through these classes, there's a realization that there's not enough classes available to move this type of education. So they're asking for funding for additional two point five million to be able to cover that additional cost. I thought that's relevant because it was something that we're dealing with. So even though we might be increasing our FTEs or trying to do something in the jail to be able to get that back on the training fees that we discussed, uh, it might be difficult to get them into the education maybe if they don't do lateral transfers or, or lateral hires and stuff like that, so. But I'm sure that's something the sheriff is working through, you know? I had a conversation with him on Monday, helping, I'm not, know what's happening out there. The sheriff's associations, I'm sure they're dealing in and on also. One interesting piece, and I think it applies to us, I haven't had a chance to confirm it yet or not, so. House Bill forty ninety-three basically is, um, will give the counties the ability to, the commissioners of each county, if I get this correctly, the ability to vote to increase court filing fees and, um.
It applies, it applies to us, but it's not going anywhere.
It allows the, the judge to surcharge on certain issues to be able to fund or pay for court facilities. So, they had, they had the hearings on it on Monday night. And I don't know, the, the, you must have heard that guy, Claudia was indicating that they had a few legs.
I got an email that included multiple justice court judges from the chief justice that said, this is a ridiculous proposal because basically what it does is what happened in Ferguson. That we're gonna, we're gonna charge people to pay for this stuff and not supportive of it at all. And I mean, if you, if you don't have Chief Justice.
Right.
And also the, uh,
I didn't get that.
TCA, uh, Truck administrators' Association saying that, it's not going anywhere. It was kind of a county, it's struggling counties want to generate revenue. And this would be doing it basically by issuing tickets. And it's not good public policy. That's why I say I don't think it's going anywhere.
If I, if I didn't know this by this or not, but I didn't get the word is dying, but I thought it was something we should have on our radar because of the impact that we have, um, or, you know, potentially have.
I mean, I would not, if it passed, I would not recommend you guys put a surcharge on top of people's filing fees and send people to write tickets to.
I don't disagree with that, but that's the kind of legislation that's coming out right now. This is just community pieces there.
Yes, what does AOC stand?
We sponsored that bill?
Um.
Because I'm kinda shocked with people, someone would sponsor it, or did it come out of committee? Because there is a justice court.
It came out of committee, I think the majority of the, some of those counties that need help or, um, I think it was Claudia. You know, it wasn't something that was on that we looked at, uh, it was Claudia that was basically briefing on it. It didn't get brought up by committee. So she was talking about it because the public hearing on it was that night and she was looking for testimony upon it that night, so.
But you, not too many people jumped right up to testify.
I don't know, it was an interesting one to watch. I don't know, it was an interesting one to watch.
So is AOC supportive of it or not?
It never got brought up in committee.
Oh, okay, so they didn't, AOC didn't take a stand?
So sometimes that's best not, so you can bring it up formally in committee if it really gets controversial like that.
Oh, I think you discussed it at AOC, Public Safety?
Right. It was brought up by an affiliation.
Oh, just a presentation?
The committee didn't bring it up, but during open discussion, one of the, we noticed affiliate associate reports. So when those associates do a report to the committee, they can talk about what they're doing and what they're looking for support on. And then the committee can decide if they want to bring something forward or take a position on it.
But isn't Claudia lobbyist out of public relations?
Public relations.
For a small county, right?
Yeah.
So this wasn't even an affiliate report?
No. Yeah, so it's kind of one of those, that type of stuff's allowed in affiliates. The chair's discretion. So I, I felt it was important to...
I just pointed that out because I wanted to make sure it wasn't the Justice Courts Association or the A's Association.
It was pushed, being pushed by a very powerful county. So...
Pushing, pushing?
Uh-huh.
Really?
Yeah. So when that county starts pushing things, I've seen crazy stuff happen in the legislature. Including brand new court facilities being built at the taxpayers' expense instead of the county's expense. And that's the public, our court task force, creation of our court facilities task force. Because everybody went, "Wait a minute, that's not right." Tomorrow, House Bill forty, four zero one four is going to start moving. And that's the marijuana and hemp legislation. So, pretty much, AOC is coming out in neutral on the majority of it. It doesn't necessarily, um...
Is this the bill that Rob just sent an email out about yesterday or today? It's morning I got it?
I didn't see it, it's going to be, I don't know, let me see.
Well, he's asking for input. And I'm gonna meet with Kelly after this meeting and talk to her about some issues she sees. I don't know if I'll be able to talk to you all and notice it by Tuesday, if it's actually gonna get a hearing today or...
It's supposed to move tomorrow.
So I don't know if I'll be able, I'll come and talk to you individually about it because I, you know...
I didn't get to hear. Maybe I haven't.
Well, I think he sent it to the primary people that are dealing with working in each county to develop, you know, ordinances and rules. I'll, I'll, I'll come and talk to you. Are you both gonna be here?
I didn't, I didn't email either.
I'll come and talk to you after. I, 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 I need to do some research first, but else I would talk to you now, I don't, it's not like that. But we're, we're gonna be asked for lights and inputs, so, well, we have been asked for lights and inputs, so...
Yeah. The, um, but right now, there's, there's standing neutral on, you know, that particular one. The ones that they're recommending, supporting is to, uh, clarifying the governor's ability to enter the compact of the tribe, personal use possession of recreational marijuana, clarifies prohibition of marijuana items visible in public place, clarifies prohibition of manufacturing or processing extracts, clarifies a prohibition on importing and exporting marijuana items, moves the CSA special definitions to separate section for clarity.
On, on, on this compact, is it so that it would, would allow?
Tribes to do.
Marijuana?
Yeah.
Because did you guys see what happened in California, just right here?
Mm-hmm.
So one of the tribes built multiple huge greenhouse.
Right.
Facilities. And they moved, or they contracted with non-triple members to grow the marijuana and then redistribute it back to them for distribution. And the feds came in and took it all and took the warehouses and everything.
Because it's, uh, they're still subject to some of the federal piece and there's no state protection. They didn't, they didn't enact their sovereign to...
That's why I'm assuming this is happening.
Yeah, they have, it's basically giving the tribes the ability to...
Well, the feds regulate the tribal...
Yeah. So it's gonna be interesting if they have a, a compact of the state. I don't know how that's, I'm not really a lawyer, I don't know how that's gonna work. But that's just one of the things in this particular bill. The other, uh, there's a bunch of adjusting of crime levels for unlawful manufacturing, uh, within a school, manufacturing in general, unlawful delivery, uh, unlawful delivery within a thousand feet of school, possession for those, uh, twenty-one and older. So it clarifies unlawful possession for people that are twenty-one years and older. So those who can use it, what's possession, what's lawful possession, what's not lawful possession. So it does some cleanup on that. Minor possession of more than adult can, uh, can possess this here, basically. And apparently they're support the prohibition, the use of marijuana in vehicles on the highway. Because there wasn't anything on the act for. So there's some of the, there's a lot of fixes that are being put into place. But that's like I said, it's supposed to move on tomorrow and there's a whole lot. But there's some associations saying neutral on, but portions of it, they're, the regulatory pieces they support. So instead of, oh, no, all yes, we support this, or no, we support this, we...
They're watching.
They're watching, close.
I got that in a lot of the...
Yeah. Because there's parts of it that are good and parts of it are bad. And if you can modify, if you come out and say we oppose this because of the bad piece, it could kill the bill and you lose the good stuff. But if it goes under committee and you can work it through your representatives and senators to get rid of the bad stuff, to keep the good stuff, or modify it, to make it all good, it, it's, it's a win-win. So that's why sometimes you'll see a positive position or negative position in general. So we're gonna keep an eye on this and we're gonna tweak it as we go, or do the best we can. One of the things that also came out is proposed amendments to the Senate Bill fifteen eleven. That's the expanded access bill. I think I brought this up once before. The expanded access bill is basically the piece that's going to start merging the, if you read it, it, it shows it's basically a merger between medical and recreational marijuana. It's the, it's the beginning of that merger. And understanding how that, that's Senate Bill fifteen eleven with the dash amendments. I think it's the dash three already, uh, is important. Especially because as we work through our limits here.
Right now.
Because they're, they're in the process of merging this stuff. So as we might wanna consider, uh, deliberations. But, um, understanding that, as we go into that, I think it'd be very relevant. Some of the dash amendments that are, that are out there right now, I'll just go over them quickly. Basically, it directs OLCC to register qualified OLC license producers, possessors, wholesalers, retailers, to produce, possess and sell medical marijuana. So that's the big one. Because now that gives them the ability to sell medical marijuana on a commercial basis out of the medical system. Not just on, not just the nonprofit stuff that they've been running under a long time.
So is that due to help authority?
That's the OLCC.
Well, haven't they been allowed to provide access to recreational outlets already?
They were given a temporary one-year piece by the governor to allow that last year's crop essentially to be able to be sold to dispensaries.
And we could've.
Right.
In our local jurisdictions, not a lot of it.
Right.
But there was only three or four months over before it became recreational marijuana.
What this does is it basically says, the medical marijuana producers want to legitimize. And they want to get out of just the medical field, but it lets them get rid of their excess because they've admitted in OLCC rack meetings that fifty percent, maybe more, of their product is going into different markets. They wouldn't use the word illegal or black, but they did in the hallways. But this is an attempt to basically curtail that illegal market. And keep it all to the state and start keeping things from being the problem in other states.
Commercial, right?
They'll, they'll be allowed to sell it commercially.
Commercial.
Yeah, which is a different piece than just a nonprofit status. So that's, that's where it has an impact on us, especially in our zone. Yeah, the second piece is, uh, directs OLCC and OHA to adopt rules to implement expanded access. Technical and conforming amendments. Marijuana retailers may not collect tax from medical cardholders. And clarifies that local option sales tax does not apply to medical marijuana. One of the pieces that AOC is opposing in that particular piece of fifteen eleven is provides for medical marijuana card reciprocity with other states. Basically, if you have a card, i- if it's, it, it's like a concealed evidence license. If that state has reciprocity with you, then it has reciprocity back and forth. What we're opposing here is reciprocity where, uh, cardholders from California can basically have Oregon grow their, their medicine for them and then ship it to California. Because California doesn't have any laws that allow for that. So it, it curtailed, we wanna, we believe that that needs to be, if it's gonna be reciprocity, it's full reciprocity to conform with the laws, not necessarily a one-way reciprocity.
How, you know, the only reason why states have been able to do this is because they've kept it within the state and not violated commerce laws. I'm not gonna violate commerce laws, be a reciprocity...
That's a great question. And that's one that they have to figure out when they're right from legal side. This is just a rule that's proposed, but that's something to be vetted out during the hearings.
They can't clear federal law.
That's kind of why we oppose that at all, reciprocity, state, the state. If we're dealing with it, we're dealing with it, the federal law applies. So, um, so the dash ones expands early start retailers to dispensaries. States, medical grower plant limits, so while OLCC producer license are opt-out election pending. Stay on note of grower plants limits to April of two thousand and sixteen. Sunset for sections twenty-four and twenty-five, so those stays, that puts a sunset clause in place. Instead of stays are ineffective, plus access to data, we need to repeal. Repeal the medical grow opt-in to retail producers as unnecessary. Unit caption, emergency clauses. The dash twos and dash threes are a lot simpler. Removes, removes products containing non-psycho, non-psychoactive cannabinoids, cannabinoids for use on skin, hair, from definition of marijuana industrial hemp. Basically saying, uh... Excuse me, removes products containing, so basically saying you're not gonna make products that have a psychotropic effect that are basically shampoo or hand lotion. Because there's a, there's that ability under some of this manufacturing, making hand lotion gives a psychotropic effect. So it basically removes those products on the dash twos and the dash threes. Exhents medical marijuana products from OHA concentration packaging. Their recommendation, we're likely in opposition on the dash three amendment because, uh... The OHA is basically the ones that are in charge of saying, you can only be packaged this much and this type of dosage. They're trying, somebody in this bill is trying to remove that from the OHA on medical marijuana. Basically saying the doctor prescribed just much. But as this fifteen eleven starts merging recreation and medical together, standardized packaging and dosing is kind of a must. So, you know, those are the...
Who's testing it? Who's enforcing it?
Those are the Oregon Health Authority and the OLCC. And it has to go to the labs. There's, there's a whole lab system that's being set up with this to do the endorsement, have the new testing on the product. So they pull samples from so much in the batch and make sure it's good or meets the requirements and then be forced to be taken to market. So it doesn't meet certain standards that products not being brought to market. So, um... And I, it didn't get me who was doing the, uh, Representative Olson was the, uh, on the dash two and dash three. And was the one looking for that. I don't know why he even wanted to do that dash three, but I'll have to ask the question. The Department of, uh, moving out of the AOC stuff, Department of Corrections approached me.
Can I ask you something about AOC?
Yeah.
So you were up there on Monday or whatever?
Right.
Did you testify on some of this?
I didn't testify.
Oh, you didn't?
No. I was asked to testify. And I, I sat there and watched when I was gonna testify on that.
Okay, I thought you said, I was just wondering which ones you testified on?
No, 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 I, I wasn't paying attention all afternoon, but not necessarily. That, that was that courthouse one, you know? It's not gonna touch that with somebody else's poll. Department of Corrections approached me. And basically said, with the transition that we're having right now, or what's going on, they were wondering if they'd like to do a peer review of our Department of Corrections program. So, write something up, tell me what you're thinking and get back to me and I'll bring it to the appropriate channels.
Yeah, I'm not interested in doing that right now at the current time.
I'm just, you know...
I used to actually conduct the peer reviews for DOC. So I'm fairly familiar with the purpose of me, but right now is not the time where we're going to do it.
I'm just letting you know, if there's a, if you're questioning on that, I'm sure you'd wanna know. So just write up what you're thinking and get back to me.
Who approached you on it?
Jeremy. So...
At AOC?
Yeah, AOC is, they come to the public safety meeting at all times. There's representatives from the governor's office, the...
So Jeremiah filed this with the Criminal Justice Commission.
He was a deputy director?
Yeah, he, well, he was at one time, I don't know if it was...
Yeah, he was on you. So, so, we were, yeah, they made their beta, rough thing up through services to go come in, go peer review and look at the program and what we have and where it's, where it is.
It's actually not DOC that does the peer review. It's actually other counties that do the peer review.
I'm saying that there's two programs. DOC has one review that they do and recommendations from the Department of Corrections. And then they have a second one where it's a larger group that is a DOC group plus a correctional directors that are, that are working with them. So I said, I said, "Write up what you got and I'll, they'll send it to me next week." So then I'll bring it forward.
Bring it back to me?
Yeah, yeah. Maybe discuss it further, but I just wanted you to know that I was approached with that.
Did he approach you personally or did he offer in a group?
Personally. So, a lot of people are aware of what's going on right now.
Well, just for the record, our corrections program is still recognized as one of the best in the state.
Yeah.
And actually, we get requested that our staff go and participate in peer reviews.
Right.
So that's why I'm telling you it's two separate issues.
Well, I don't disagree. But I'm just trying to be careful on it, so...
Is that it?
That's all I have, it's a bit for the moment.
So, um, the AOC meetings I attended, teleconference wise, was the water policy. And I got knocked off the teleconference about five times. I kept calling up. And so I missed a lot, I'm sure, but, um, they said the place-based planning was out for comment right now. And I don't know to when, the, those applications or grants that they gave, I'm not sure. I didn't get the details on that. And that the feasibility study grant funding was beginning. And they had other implementation grant programs that are listed as Senate Bill eight thirty-nine and they were watching. Everything I heard about the legislative efforts in the water policy, they're watching. So nothing they took a position on. And then I tried to, I attended some of the legislative committee meeting and got knocked off a couple times and finally gave up on that one. But, so I don't have anything to report on that, but you were in that one as well. report on that, but you were in that one as well, legislative meeting.
Yeah.
So nothing was...
That's the frustration of those phone calls.
I've never had that, I've always called in and never been disconnected before.
Yeah.
So they didn't know, was their line or our line, and I just, especially with the water one, I just kept calling back. But I'll probably check with IT and see if there's something, if that happens again. That's the first time it's ever happened to me.
They've been having some, they've been having issues with that for a while, and even the teleconference one, we had to work with them, try and get that back online, because the teleconference part's still working, because that was something we used to be able to do.
Uh-huh.
And it went away, but there's, there's, oh, you know, that's a pain in the butt part, and they're trying to figure out how to do that. It's a real toss-up.
Yeah. The other, only thing I went to was a couple events with the City of Rogue River, that they had a public workshop with the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and it was their transportation infrastructure, and it was a public presentation on their plans. And most of it is involving the bike path connection that runs onto Grant's Pass. And there was maybe five people there. I think when I went to the Gold Hill, and there was only two of us there, but, so, but they were interested in what was going on. And then I attended the City of Rogue River council meeting later that evening, and they didn't have anything alarming either, they, I don't think they got that. They went through their, the city of, the city message, state of the city message, so, but it's always a great meeting to go to.